It's time to call the meeting to order. The first scheduled meeting is December eighth, two thousand and eight. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Byrne?
Here.
Councilmember Dorn?
Here.
Councilmember Fisher?
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens? Mayor Muller?
Here. Approval of minutes from the previous meeting of November twenty-four, two thousand and eight. Motion?
So moved.
By Councilmember McCullough, second.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Lewandowski. Any questions, corrections, deletions? Hearing done, seeing none. Clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes.
Presentations. Presentation number one.
Number one is Richard L. Nemitz with a brief presentation on the Black River Raftoff event and to discuss next year's event.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Richard Nemitz. I'm the event organizer for the Black River Raftoff we had last year. I've got a small presentation and a request for that event you'll see during the PowerPoint when I'm talking about. It was a great success and go ahead and play it. We had over thirty boats that showed up first time. Pay attention to the age of the people and what they're holding in their hands. We had boats all the way from Lake St. Clair that came out. We raised over eighteen hundred bucks for the event, which paid for all our event costs, which include the DJ, the teachers we made up, and the prizes and stuff we have for the event. There was a big diverse group. We had younger people and older, a lot of my friends who are business owners, well-respected people in the community. Problem we had is that the alcohol ordinance was not to the south side of the river, only to the north side. So we had a little bit of confusion, but I'm asking the council to extend the alcohol ordinance to the south side of the river this year for our event. And if we have a large enough event, maybe by 'oh-ten, we can bring it to the marina on the north side. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearings. Public hearing number one.
Is to hear public comments from all persons interested in the maintenance costs of the Military Streetscape Project, which is from the south side of Black River to the north side of Court Street, and for the purpose of reviewing said special assessment role. A letter was received from attorney David R. Heibauer, who represents William and Gail Kettlewell from Grab Incorporated, who are property owners within the special assessment area stating their objections to the proposed special assessment.
Anyone wishing to address public hearing number one, public hearing number one only. This is the time to do so. Public hearing number one is open for public comment. Step up to the podium, give us your last, spell your last name for us, and go ahead, Dave.
My name is David Heibauer, and the last name is spelled H-E-Y-B-O-E-R. While my letter may speak for itself, I think most of what we really have is an area where the city is trying to help all of the city by helping the downtown. And you've restricted, you've actually placed this assessment on about a six-block area, of which my clients, quite frankly, and I don't mean it the way it's going to sound, receive absolutely no benefit. They have the former Community Middle Health Building and the, I think it's Center for Human Resources. And while things such as putting out trash cans, cleaning the street, and putting up nice lights is laudable for the city as a whole, I think that's exactly what it is. It's something for the city as a whole. And I don't believe that my clients, and quite frankly, any of the stores or businesses in that area should have to be paying for that. I think what the city really wants to do is brighten up the area when you come into town so that you know there is a downtown, so that you know you want people in the city to shop in the city and not head north. That's what it's all about, and I believe by spreading this cost over the city as a whole, that's what you should be doing. And I don't think my clients should be required to pay. We have no benefit from it, and we certainly, if we ask you to turn off the lights in front of our building, I don't think anyone's about to. So I think this is simply something that's for the good of the city as a whole, and it should be taxed to the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public hearing number one? Hearing done, seeing none. Public hearing number one is closed. Resolution?
Would approve the continuance of the downtown special assessment district for the ongoing maintenance of Military Streetscape Project, again from the south side of Black River to the north side of Court Street, including the special assessment role and estimated maintenance costs.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Protest Fisher, second.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Lewandowski. Discussion comments, questions, concerns? Councilmember Byrne?
Yeah, didn't we get feedback from the businesses affected overall and the residents? What was that?
I believe we did. Yes, we did.
Refresh my memory on that? What the feedback in general was, like what percentage of the businesses affected?
The whole was?
Percentage of people that were interested in or supportive of?
Mike DeLong sent a letter to every potential person that would be assessed, indicating the original amount of the assessment and the reduced assessment of seventeen-five. He asked all of the interested property owners to get back to him, whether they were interested, yes, or interested, no. And he heard from, I think, two or three. And he assumed, that being the case, that this was, that there was no objection.
That two or three were favorable, unfavorable? Next, favorable?
If I remember, last time this was brought up to us, there were several entities that came in here and spoke opposed to it. I personally went out and met with two of them that showed up here at the meeting. And though I've not recontacted them, I believe Mr. Clegg met with them. Okay. And also, I know that the gentleman's, I slipped my mind, the owner of Standard Office Supply was quoted in the paper that he was now supportive of it.
Bloomquist?
Pardon me?
Bloomquist?
Harlan.
Harlan, yeah, okay, thanks. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor Muller, the history of this deal, not being terribly familiar with it, was it a deal arranged between the city and the property owners there to begin with? Or was it imposed on them, or how did that come to be?
Mayor Muller, members of the council, this is the second phase of the Streetscape Project. The first phase was the north side from the Black River to Huron, and then the second phase was from Black River to Court Street going south. In both cases, grant dollars were received to do the actual project, and it's provision of the grant that there be a means of continuing to preserve and operate the Streetscape, maintain the Streetscape. And so the property owners on both sides of the river each time were contacted ahead of time as to whether or not they would favor moving forward with Streetscape. And in both cases, the majority of the property owners, a really fairly large majority of the property owners approved moving forward, accepting the grant, and doing the upgrades. This past year, when we had several people that came in and spoke at the public hearing, Mr. Clegg and I and some other members of the city met with a variety of property owners on the south side. Probably six or seven of them came to the initial meeting and had talked with their neighbors, and we tried to iron out a variety of issues. As Mr. Brown mentioned, Mike DeLong worked with the property owners, polled them in terms of what services they'd like to see done, what services they could handle themselves. And so the assessment was reduced somewhat to reflect what he'd found. So I guess it's that.
Yeah, so as I understand it, then, to take this grant money, the property owners agreed to this and wanted this to happen?
Yes.
And are you saying, if I'm reading between the lines, you're saying the vast majority of the property owners still concur with that? To your knowledge, to the best of your?
To my knowledge, yes. We had, you know, a number of property owners that had some specific concerns. Part of it was, we learned later, we'd had a late spring, and the person responsible for doing the plannings wanted to wait till he knew there wasn't frost. And as it turned out, we met at the Time Terrill Building in their second-floor conference room where you can look out on the Streetscape. The day we were meeting is the day that those people were in doing all the plannings, which helped us somewhat in the meeting because, you know, at least there was work being done. But no, we, communications was part of, probably part of the problem, and I think with Mike DeLong's help, moving forward, we'll have better communications with the property owners. We've got a better idea of what things they like to do themselves, what things they like to look uniform throughout the district, not just on the south side but on the north side. And the plannings were certainly one of those. They liked the uniform aspect. I think the same was true with the decorative lights. So it felt like a pretty good meeting in that we got a pretty good response from the people that were there. To my knowledge, we've had the one written complaint that we had tonight, as we also had in May. But the other people that either wrote or came to the public hearing in May, I believe Mr. DeLong has since talked to, a couple of them were quoted in the paper, and at this point, it seems positive.
To give you a little further background, when this was first originally brought to the council, it died on the table. There was no motion to get it off the table because there was no support, because of the business places who came forward and were upset with no planning, no water, the music wasn't playing, and so on and so forth. I went out and met with them the day before John and Bruce did, or I'm sorry, Bob and John did. And they had said that they had a meeting. I told them if they had any problems, they 'd contact me. I've never been contacted by any of them, and I've just read what was in the paper and then the report tonight, so.
Thank you.
But it did die on the table in May because there were several businesses in here that complained.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Lewandowski?
John, is this something that is indefinitely, we're going to have to take care of it forever, or is it something that has an expiration that where the businesses will no longer have to pay it?
I don't believe it has an expiration. I mean, I believe we're supposed to maintain the Streetscape into the future. I don't think it's written as hard and fast as some of the grant agreements we've had. I mean, I assume you reach a practical end of the design life of what's there, but, you know, in terms of the decorative lighting and the decorative street fixtures, there's an expectation that they'll be maintained. And part of these dollars are going for that maintenance. Part of the dollars are going for the landscaping and the lighting also, you know, which, from our discussions with property owners, also seem to be important to them.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Just one.
Councilmember Byrne?
The grant dollars are tied to maintaining it, but is maintaining it required to be a special assessment, or could it just be a budget item in the general fund, or are the two separate?
No, I think as far as the grant board was concerned, they wanted to see it maintained. They wanted to see a plan for maintaining it. This was the plan, and I wasn't here, didn't work for the city, I guess I was literally in the city, but I didn't work for the city when the first Streetscape was planned. The special assessment district was what they came up with at the time, working with Main Street and working with the property owners. And so that was continued on the south side. I don't think it's a requirement necessarily that you have a special assessment district, but that was the decision that was made at the time.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing done, seeing none. Clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
No.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Public audience, number one. At this time, public audience is open to anyone that wishes to speak to the city council. To bring anything that you believe is important to the city or the city council that should be acted upon, or want to express your opinion. We ask that you give your names, spell your last name, and we ask that you limit your comments to four minutes. First, I'm sorry, first on the agenda, we have Mr. David Ebert. We'll give an explanation of his business. You need us. Mr. Ebert, please.
Honorable Mayor Muller and councilmembers, thank you for allowing me this time to come and speak to you tonight. We do have a very brief PowerPoint that we could put on the screen, please. We also have a copy of that in front of you. You can follow along. The purpose here tonight is just to introduce you to a new company operating here in St. Clair County called Unitas. Our company is all about helping organizations build a house of collaboration and just discover new strategies to collaborate and innovate within the organization. Our team members are all locally here in St. Clair County. Someone you may know, Jim Ralton, lives here in Port Huron. Myself, David Ebert, live in Fort Grashit. Dr. Frank Genio is from Marysville, and Laura Stopkinsky is from Elmont. Basically, what we talk about when we say building a house of collaboration is trying to get organizations to utilize the power of the people in their organization. We do that through various different means, but with a process that I'll get into a little bit here. And it's all about finding new ways to do business, new ways to solve problems, and take advantage of the opportunities that this economy is providing for us these days. And the old way of doing business just doesn't cut it, so we've got some innovative new ideas to show you. Go ahead, the next screen, please. Our mission is to be the ultimate resource center for just new innovative business solutions. This is just a visual of what I kind of mean when I say building a house of collaboration. Basically, companies will come to us with, again, either a problem or possibly an opportunity they want to take advantage of. We come in with our members of our team, with our hundred and twenty-five years of combined business experience, and we utilize the latest technology. We have laptops and specialized software to facilitate a meeting. We work with the client to create an agenda, to produce the goal of getting the results thereafter. And so we come in and build the foundation with our process. And we work with the four main pillars of any company are their people, their purpose, their productivity, and their profitability. And we may work with just one of those areas, it may be a combination or all of them, to get the desired results, which is the roof on the house of collaboration. Go ahead to the next screen, please. These are our core values that drive everything we do as a business: integrity, excellence, collaboration, innovation, and profitability. And some of the solutions that we offer, everything's pretty much centered in the five main categories there of training, consulting, facilitating, collaborating, and public speaking and presenting. Those are some examples of verticals that we've worked in and things we've done recently. Do a lot of strategic planning, a lot of visioning, business continuity is a big area these days, planning with companies, and just branding and marketing in general. Some of the markets we serve are up there, a lot of the different verticals we've worked in. But our niche is in the nonprofit and government segments. We feel that's where we have the most to offer, where we can really benefit our community the most, so that's where we'd like to focus. And just a quick, a couple of examples of like a real-world scenario of what we would do. Imagine a chemical spill, either at the bridge or at a local plant, where the company's employees are forced to evacuate. We can come in real-time. What we do, critical moment decision-making, and we gather the leaders of the business, the admin and anybody that they need together. It can be anywhere around the world with the power of the internet. They can be part of this meeting in real-time. And we get the decision-makers together and find out how they're going to get through this crisis. Could be bringing in vendors, suppliers, to help figure out what they're going to do to get through that. Part of the process we do with business continuity planning, we prefer to do that ahead of a crisis, but once they've gotten through that, we can then work with them to plan how to avoid that in the future, how to avoid any possible business interruption. And through that process, we utilize their employees, again, collaborate with the employees on the floor, out in the shops, and really get their input on how that plan should be put together, and then offer them training and get them up to speed on how they execute that plan if that should, something like that should happen again. All that's done, again, with our process, this electronic collaborative process that we use. We've got a portfolio in front of each of you, I think that's part of your packet, to give you some more information. It won't take up your time tonight, but if you can look through that, it'll give you a better idea of what we offer. It's a very difficult process to explain. You really have to see it and be part of a demonstration to see the power of it. Couple of quick examples. We were hired by a community foundation recently to help them with their visioning sessions, used this process to come up with a name for their visioning, and they came up with the destination port here, and again, using this process in a very quick amount of time. We had about forty-five, fifty people in the room. They all brainstormed their ideas. They worked together to organize those and vote on the top ideas, and within about twenty-five minutes, were able to come up with that name of destination port here and using this process. We just recently finished a project with the Aging Network in the state of Michigan with all the directors of the Council of Aging, got together at a convention and worked with them on their biggest problems in the next coming years are, you know, the increased demand from baby boomers and at the same time having all their funding cut, and how are they going to deal with that in the, you know, in the coming years? So we used this process to help them brainstorm a bunch of ideas, and I believe in about twenty-five minutes there, we generated over three hundred ideas with that group. So it's very powerful. It's a way to get really good results in a meeting very quickly, and it's a new way of doing it where it's not the old-fashioned consultant coming in with pen and paper and using flip charts and trying to write down everything you say. Everything's captured on the laptop in real-time and is part of the report that we get back to you within one to three days. So just, again, thank you for your time tonight, letting us introduce ourselves to you. Do you want to mention, we have public sessions once a month that we run, so you can actually be part of one of these sessions to see the power of this process. The next one's in January, on January nineteenth, and it's from three to five p.m. at the Colonial Banquet Center. And we pick different groups each time to kind of focus. The next group is going to be for government administrators, so you'd all be welcome to attend that and actually get hands-on experience with our process to see what it can do. So again, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate it. This time, and good luck with you and your business and your partners. This time, public audience is open. Again, I ask that you limit your time to four minutes and that you give your last names. Call up for the clerk. Public audience is now open. Thank you. Thank you for waiting here.
Thank you. Joanne Rumford, thirty-five forty Parkway Drive, apartment nine, Port Huron at Continental Core Apartments. I am here tonight to wish everybody here a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and also to the St. Clair County residents and people watching or listening tonight, and across the bridges, too. My mom has a way of saying things, funny things, but she really, deep down in her heart, you know, means well, and when she says things, you know, you have to take it with a grain of salt, but I might take after her for that. But anyways, she has said in the past during the end of the year, she says, "Well, I'll see you tomorrow," or "the next day," if not until next year, God willing. And God bless her. My, what I want to talk tonight about is, and I'm going to present this of my apartment here, it's a, I don't know if the city is going to do any work for our water that we have at Continental Core Apartments, but we have stakes in the perimeter of our apartment, on Continental and Parkway, and I assume it's the orange, you know, the city, so I don't know if you know. Anyways, I'm going to present this, and it's got my bill for my water bill for the last quarter, a hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. And you can have this, and you can give it to five if you want. But anyways, I talked to landlord, the girls in the office, and they said that might be the city. I'm a one-person tenant since March this year. My bills have been in the past a lot for water. I don't know if it's because I've had the city come out a couple of times. We had to have the parking lot, the rainwater was going through, it was flooding the parking lot for about a month and a half before the office found out about it. They fixed that, but this is more or less for the residents at my apartment. There's twelve apartments. We have a resident manager. Now, what I understand is that the water bill is paid by us. I don't know how many people pay their own bills. I do. I pay the utility bills directly to the utility companies, plus the city of Port Huron. I pay directly to the city of Port Huron for the water. I think a hundred and thirty-two dollars is ridiculous, and reading the article today about Mark Byrne's rates, don't hold water. It says here that it is about, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, is quoted from John Ogden, for a quarter water bill for a family. Now, I'm only one person. We don't have, I don't have a washing machine and dryer. We have a separate unit for that. So I'm hoping that maybe, you know, like, there can be some kind of a, you know, if that's what's going to be doing, having to have the work done there to fix the problem, because when I had the city people come out, they said that they didn't know where to cut the water off. And the meters are in apartment one, so go figure. So now, this is what I got in the mail on December fifth, dated December fifth. It's the finding of no significant impact. It's from the Department of Environmental Quality, and it has the map of what has been done as far as the sewer separation, and it's an NIS. They're saying that they don't need to present an NIS statement, which is, let's see here, non-environmental impact statement. Environmental impact statement is not required for the next two, for the next two projects that has to be for the combined sewer separation in order to get the financing. I have thirty days to send this in. I don't know how many people got this, but in writing, I have thirty days to send this in. So I know this isn't part of the roundtable discussion because we were not involved with that, the combined sewer separation. I was in group seven, so it wasn't discussed, but they are asking for people's input. So that's all I wanted to talk about.
Thank you, Joanne.
Okay, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. Just want to tell you one, make one comment in response. Your bill would have been fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents higher if it wasn't for this council lowering the water rates last year.
I know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mark, too, for doing this thing and tapering today. So don't forget, little people.
Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience? Now's the time to do so.
My name is John Gillis. Last name's spelled G-I-L-I-S, and this is kind of an out-of-season question I've got. It's reference to the sign that's in the Pine Grove Park when you're going south and north, and it's, the last thing on that sign says something about no overnight camping. Okay? And I just want to try to see if I can get a clarification on what? And I just want to try to see if I can get a clarification on what no overnight camping is, because I spend a lot of time down at the river on the rail fishing. And, uh, sometimes you get a real cold north wind coming through there, and you get the freezing rain. And a lot of the guys like to, like to throw a couple of poles in the ground and put up like a lean-to just to break the cold wind. And I've had a couple of, uh, city, uh, not the police officers, but the cadets have come down here and told us that we can't have that up. And, but I don't consider that overnight camping to try to get yourself out of the freezing rain and out of the wind while you're down there having a good time, you know, trying to catch some fish and stuff. And I've had a couple of friends of mine ask me about that, and I told them I, I go to city councils and I'll ask them.
Mr. Gillis, let me, let me recommend that you contact Mr. Port, the chief of police, or Mr. Livisay and talk to them during office hours. Contact them either by phone or in person, and they'll answer your question. If you're not satisfied, then you can come back to us.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience, now's the time to do so.
Good evening, Mayor Muller. Good evening, council members. With the recent comments that some council members will support a water sewer increase in the upcoming budget, I believe it is reasonable to support Mr. Byrne's resolution and include personal residents for separate wa- separate water meeting of water and not returning to the sewer's treatment system. In the Lorwood and Hartwood subdivision in Kimball Township, of which the city of Port Huron supplies their water and sewer, many residents have separate meters for this purpose. I think that we should extend the same policy to the citizens of the city of Port Huron. Also, I'd like to make a comment here. It also appears that the majority of the new McMoRan Civic Center Authority are not residents of the city of Port Huron. If this is a fact, I think it's disparate and discriminatory to the citizens of Port Huron and the taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience, now's the time to do so.
Good evening, council. Alice O'Neil, Prospect Place, Port Huron. Mr. Burns, Councilman Burns? Thank you very much for putting that resolution on tonight. Um, this is something in the residence, the businesses definitely, I think, would be a step in the right direction for the twenty-first century for Port Huron to recognize this double meter, to not penalize them. And in the residences, about three years ago, I talked with Carl Thomian about this, and it was his idea at that time that they would take the summer water rate for residences and the winter water rate usage and deduct one from the other, and the difference in that would be the water you use for your lawn and the outside of your house in the summer. One of the secrets in Port Huron, which most residents don't know, is if you put in an in-ground sprinkler system, your outside water does not get sewer ta- taxes or sewer fees on it. So I think it should be equal for all residences, but definitely, Mark, for the businesses, thank you. Second thing, now that we know we had an ordinance about taking down the old signage-off buildings, how do we go about enforcing this? Is this for residents to have to report these signs around town that have been there for years and years? We all know the beacons have been gone, the sperrys has been gone, and most of these other places still have signs up and their windows are gone. We talked about it, Mayor Muller, how do we, how do we go about doing this?
I was looking for Kim Harmer. Uh, she said that they were in the process of working on it, so I don't know where, where the status is, but we can find out.
Okay. And lastly, mentioning downtown, I just came from downtown tonight, uh, from Coach's show. Um, I don't like, I love going to all the new restaurants downtown and the stores and that. I don't like going in the winter, and there's a reason. Because when you get out of your car, you get a footful of slush. Now, the park department does a wonderful job with their little John Deere or whatever it is to keep all those sidewalks clean through the park. You look at downtown, each business has to shovel their own snow. Where are they supposed to put that snow? Take it inside and melt it? There's only one place you can put it, and that's in the gutter. And there it stays, in the mound, builds, and it builds between the gutter and the edge of the sidewalk. And by the time we get to February, you have to climb over the ice chunks. So, since downtown is so important to our vision, can we borrow the little John Deere or whatever to keep the sidewalks downtown, get the snow off, and get the plows to take it out of downtown? Thank you.
Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas. Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience, now's the time to do so. Hearing non, seeing none, public audience is closed. Consent agenda, I would like to remove from the city manager, number one. Anything else that needs to be removed? Hearing non, seeing none, motion to accept the consent agenda. So moved. Moved by Councilmember McCullough, second.
Support.
Supported by Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher. Without any further discussion, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. With the passage of the consent agenda, uh, resolution number two, scheduling a public hearing for December twenty-second, two thousand eight, to hear comments on the application of the LLD Thermal Treatment Incorporated, twenty-six fifty-six, twenty-four street, for an industrial facilities exemption certificate. Resolution number three, making permit traffic control order number one-two-two-two, which reads, "There shall be no parking on the north side of Varney Street from Tenth Street to Thirteenth Street." Resolution number four, confirming and declaring single lot special assessments in the total amount of one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-six cents for special trash pickup. And resolution number six, confirming and declaring single lot special assessments in the total amount of ten thousand, three dollars and fifty cents for sidewalk replacement. Upcoming events, December through March, uh, the snow ordinance has begun and parking is prohibited on paved city streets between the hours of two-thirty AM and six AM. December ninth, sixteenth, and nineteenth, the Ice Hawks have hockey games at the McMoRan Arena. December eleventh is holiday special concert at noon at the SC Four Fine Arts Theater. December twelfth through the fourteenth, the Nutcracker showing at various times at the McMoRan Auditorium. December thirteenth, the YMCA has Christmas crafts with Santa. December twenty-fourth through the twenty-fifth, Christmas Eve and Christmas, city, city offices will be closed for the holidays. December thirty-first, the first night, Port Huron, two thousand nine. January first, uh, New Year's, city offices will be closed for New Year's. And January seventeenth, Lord Stanley, or Stanley Cup will be at the McMoRan from noon to four o'clock, I think. Communications and petitions, number one.
From Richard L. Neimetz, asking the council to extend the alcohol ordinance to the south shore of the Black River for the two thousand nine Black River raft dock to draw in other boating activities.
Motion to accept.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember, or Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher?
Move the communication petition, number one, be received and filed.
Second?
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Byrne. Any discussion?
Uh, Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Byrne?
Uh, what publicly-owned property is on that side of the river? I'm trying to picture any.
Uh, there's a, I think the park to the west of Citizens First and the boardwalk along, uh, all the way along there from the bridge to the bridge is city property.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing non, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
No.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
No.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Unfinished business, number one. This is-